Remember getting.
Okay, it started. Okay. So the minutes um are the same document that this committee submitted as their report to the full uh the full commission. But we we just want you to formally adopt them as as this.
All right.
Minutes too.
I I will do that. Uh can I have a motion to approve the minutes as wrote?
My question.
Is there a second on that? Think so. Hey, Todd, could you second that motion?
Oh, he doesn't even look like his earplugs at his head. I don't think he can hear us. I don't think he's put his ears back in yet.
There you go.
I can second if if he can.
Well, hey, that's it. Yeah, that's. Todd, you want to second that motion?
Oh, Christopher just did.
Okay. Or is that Chris? Hey, Chris, how you doing? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Eyes have it. The minutes are approved. And now we have our new business and we have a scenario, the planning update. Is that you, Paul?
Yeah, that's me. Uh, well, we'll do uh basically just an update on what we've been up to so far. Uh with scenario planning and then also um a couple engagement updates as well. Um, so as as you all uh might remember, earlier this summer, um we started the scenario planning process um where we took a lot of the information that we learned and and heard from from folks as we as we were out in the community um talking with with folks, going to events, that sort of thing. And and then we had some stakeholder meetings and kind of um talked through what are um drivers of change? Um what are what are the types of things that um need to need to be different essentially? Um if we want our communities to to look a different way, sort of reflecting um what the community said that that they want to see. Um, so we started doing that. We we use the existing conditions report, which we've shared with you all um and sort of identified these key issues. Um and through those, we've been creating scenarios and of different possible futures for the county. Um, in in coming up with a way to sort of test different policy ideas through this scenario planning process to help give us an idea of um what types of of policies and and programming does the county need to um engage in to to start moving the needle on some of these key issues. So that's what we're doing right now is um sort of the beginning parts of of the testing, sort of setting up the test, I guess. Um, we are doing um sort of future land use. Uh, we're calling it painting. Really, we're taking existing land use uh in St. Louis County and using a a mapping software application to sort of change those land uses um based around the scenarios. Um, and to to reflect a specific example, and and we can go into a little more detail here in a second. And and then once we have those new, that new sort of land use framework, um we're we're able to test um using another software project pro- product that I will also uh provide you some more information on. Um, to sort of help give us information about what is the potential impact of um making a a certain policy decision o- over another. My might have gone too far. Um, so this is just uh, yeah, see, stopping responsive, it's it's going too far. Let me go back one. Um. Uh, this is just an image. The one the one on the the left is is uh your friends in the planning department and our consultants. Um, sort of working through that initial drivers of change brainstorming process. Um, and then this is sort of a a hand drawn um version of a scenario um that that Mel and I worked on and sort of imagining um what a potential future could look like in St. Louis County where um there's continued population decline. Um, what would happen if we sort of reallocate our resources um as a local government to really only um providing services essentially uh to folks within what sort of inside the two I two seventy ring um and everything sort of outside of that ring uh would become sort of open space conservation area. This is not this is not a realistic future for the county. Like, we're not going to stop providing services, but using sort of extreme examples like this is the only way that we can really tell what types of of policy ideas are gonna can are gonna make a difference. If we just make small tweaks at the margins, it's not going to give us a good picture or enough useful information to sort of um help us determine what um sort of what policy issues can impact um what uh the what challenges in front of the county. Um, so this here is the existing land use framework for St. Louis County. So this is a map of the county showing existing land uses. Um, note that this is different than zoning, which is what you all typically work with. Zoning is sort of what what tells you what you can do. Land use is what is actually being done on a on any given parcel. Um. I would just, you know, draw your attention to all of the yellow that you see. All of that is single family detached housing. So that's probably around eighty eighty-five percent of all of the parcels in St. Louis County are developed with a single family detached home. Um, so uh I mean, that's sort of a visual way to represent this idea that we've been finding that the way we use our land um isn't really working anymore in terms of um fiscal sustainability. Sorry, I got a pause for cat tax. I got a visitor here. This is Walter. Everyone say hi. All right, now get out of here so I can finish. Sorry, um. Where was I, Mel?
Uh, I think you were talking about
How were you not using?
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, yes. So, um the by having all of not all, but uh the vast majority of our land developed with single family um detached homes. Um, it leads to sort of the the fiscal constraints and sustainability issues and car dependency that um are becoming real challenges for for folks in our community. Um, so this is a list of some of the scenarios that we are are building. So it's, you know, what would happen if if the county focused all of its transportation dollars on investing in sort of transit or multimodal uh transportation options rather than than just roads, right? Um, what would happen if we um really went all in on supporting and and investing in North County, right? Um, sort of the the smart shrinking one that I just showed you that was just hand drawn. Um, other other types of Noah's Ark is a sort of retreating from the floodplain. So um essentially a moratorium on any development in the in the floodplain, but also um returning it that land back to the floodplain and sort of um any displaced uh land uses being relocated throughout the county. Um, so these are the types of uh scenarios that we are painting um in our um sort of GIS software program um that will later get um sort of put through the the test to see which of these policies move the needle. Uh, so this is just an example of the transit oriented sort of St. Louis County scenario that I just mentioned, right? So if we had um invest all our resources on supporting uh sort of transit oriented development. So if you can see my cursor here on this sort of middle image, the the map on the left. Um, this is roughly where the Wellston uh MetroLink station is. Um, so this is the existing land uses, right? So you can see that there's a lot of vacancy. Um, there's some office, some industrial and a lot of single family homes, which is not really leveraging the MetroLink asset, right, in in the best way in terms of of land use and sort of economic and fiscal productivity. Um, the map on the right um is the same geography centered around sort of the Wellston MetroLink station, but this is um sort of our idea of what um transit oriented development could look like around here. Um, there's no more vacancy. There's there's a lot more uh duplex townhome. There's multifamily centered right around where the the MetroLink station is. Um, offices, industrial use, um restaurants, retail, um really creating a a a node of activity around the the train station. Um, and we we did that sort of land use change around every MetroLink station within St. Louis County. Um, as well as sort of a smaller scale version of that around all the bus stops in St. Louis County. Um, to and then we will test that to sort of give us an idea of um if we if we did this type of investment or in this type of development happened, um, what would what would the impact uh or estimated impact be on on the county? Uh, similarly, this is the the Neo Noco or the sort of invest in all in investment in North County. Um, you can see uh on here uh current land use as it exists is largely single family detached homes. Um, there's some open space and then a lot of vacancy. Um particularly around uh sort of industrial nodes um and and sort of just all dispersed throughout um where uh where it's single family homes are. Um, so in our sort of imagined future, um, we've gotten rid of most, if not all, the vacancy. We've we've really uh sort of said Earth City takes off and and is fully fully occupied and extends really to the airport. Um, the Kenlock area on the east side of the airport is is sort of developed with industrial land uses sort of oriented towards airport services. Um up in the Spanish Lake area around where the new Wild Care Park is, the sort of envision, what could the the zoo facilities impact be on Spanish Lake? Um, adding in new duplex townhomes, so you know, some hotels, some uh restaurants, retail, things uh sort of activities supporting um that amenity. Um, the Bell Fountain Corridor really sort of um implementing the the recommendations of the Spanish Lake Town Center Master Plan, which you all adopted, I think, two years ago. Um, which is is really turning the Bell Fountain sort of that retail corridor into um a a node of commercial activity. And then the the other change we made was along all county arterials, which you can kind of see um this sort of buffer here a- along arterial arterial roads. Um, we changed all of the um single family detached parcels um within a two hundred foot buffer of the arterial road into um multifamily. And then sort of beyond that two hundred foot extending another, uh I believe it was five hundred feet, all of those single family parcels into uh duplex townhome, right? And so you can start to see um just even that change. Um, one, how much single family is still left, right? There's still a lot of yellow. Um, but you can start to see um uh potential for um you know, more opportunity and and activity happening along these uh corridors, um more housing opportunity uh for folks as well. And so then sort of the last step or the last piece of the uh scenario planning process is sort of testing um these new uh these new lands landscape or land land use painted landscapes, land use painting, right? So um we don't have our our ArcGIS urban model completely built. Uh, so this is just a screenshot from somebody else, but it gives you an idea of how you can visualize potential changes, right? You have the existing sort of built form, the existing built environment. Um, and then you can sort of start to manipulate um what what land uses could be and and it it's really helpful because it um for multiple reasons, but mostly it gives you this sort of good visual so you can sort of see potential impact. Um, but then you're also able to tie specific metrics um that we want measured. Um, so changes in population, housing, um, you know, average daily trips, emissions, um all these types of things. Um, we'll tell we those changes um in in those measurements that we that we get out of sort of the testing and and running the model um will help us identify um which scenarios and and which policies are um sort of moving the needle on those those critical issues. Um, which just as a reminder, sort of how it relates to the the comp plan, these are the the five issues that we're trying to solve for essentially, right? So um population stagnation, infrastructure cost burden, housing affordability, job skills mismatch, social environmental resilience. So we're trying to identify what uh policy recommendations or what programs or or what sort of allocation of county resources is going to help us address some of these issues, right? Um, and so we're really excited to be doing this scenario planning process. Not that we weren't excited for the sort of beginning part of the planning process. Um, but this is the um the really interesting, the really challenging, but but the really interesting um sort of part of of what we're doing. And that ties into sort of our engagement update, uh what we will be sort of doing over the next month or so, next couple of weeks, really. Um, so we have two listening sessions, um one November sixth, one November seventh um in the fourth council district. So one geared towards Glasgow Village and Castle Point residents and one geared towards Spanish Lake and Old Jamestown area residents. Um, we um are interested in in engaging this community more. We felt that um the survey that we sent out maybe didn't quite capture um the 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 people in this sort of area of the county as well as we would have hoped for. So we've been intentional about going back out and we scheduled these um listening sessions in sort of coordination with um the chairwoman uh Webb um to to get these uh off the ground. Um, so we're excited to be to be going to those. Uh, we encourage you to show up uh if you want, if you have the time, but really um what we would like you all to attend is one of the open houses scheduled for sort of mid-November. Um, so these are where we will be um sort of sharing our sort of preliminary policy ideas, recommendations um in the plan with the public, right? So we'll be talking about um potential um you know, uh new policies, new ways the county could invest resources, new programs. It could also be existing things that the county are doing that we want to allocate more resources to, right? Um, so we'll be sharing those with the public. Um, it'll be open house, like each sort of topic area will have um its own sort of station that you can dive really deep into. Um, so like if somebody's only really interested in housing, they should just come, go talk to the the housing folks and then leave if they wanted, but we encourage everyone to to look at everything. Um, I think probably for next month, we would ask that you try and attend one of the open houses in lieu of of having this meeting. Um, and then we can um I have a a a formal committee meeting in in early December to kind of recap what um what you all heard at the open houses and and um sort of next steps. Um, but we're really excited for those. Um. You know, share with with your networks. We want as many people in in St. Louis County to come um and and participate in these. Um, so we're really excited. I think that might be everything. Um.
Are you gonna make uh, are you possibly gonna make Facebook um events for those that we can share?
Yeah, we can um we can look into to doing something like that. We're coordinating with the county executive's office on um sort of a communication strategy. They'll be posting some stuff on social media soon, have a press release, things like that.
Do you want us to show up more than one of those if possible or just one of those?
Um, I'd leave that up to you. I think one would be more than enough, but if you are are able and willing to come to multiple, that would be that would be great as well. We always love friendly faces. Um, but I think just if you can make it to one, we we would really appreciate that.
And we will send, um, I've added to Paul's uh to-do list to send calendar invites for the listening sessions, but have you all received the calendar invites for the open houses already?
Think so.
I have not.
Okay, we'll reset.
Double check on that.
Just to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything on my calendar.
Not on my calendar, so just yeah, just double check. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, we'll make sure that gets to you.
Thank you.
I think I didn't have anything else. Um uh, I don't have anything for a good order. I don't know if Jacob, if you had anything you wanted to add. Um.
No, thank you, Paul, for the uh for that overview. Um and I just have to say is that um for the commission is that um staff has been hard at work. Um, and I am I'm deeply impressed by what staff has been able to produce um thus far and um really looking forward to um everything that is yet to come, the policy recommendations. Um, there's a lot of really great stuff coming out of the team, so thank you.
And I would and I will just say that these are preliminary, right? Like, we have a we have a pretty good idea that the that this is the direction we want to go. Um, but part of the goal of the open house is to sort of ground truth our ideas, right? And say, we heard from from folks that these are the the challenges you see in the county. These are our sort of ideas about what we can do about it. Um, what do you all think? Does that make sense? Is this sort of track with what um with what you're hoping to see with the direction that you hope the county goes? Um, and some of them are probably going to be more popular than others. Um, and that's just sort of how it works. Um, but we we we're trying to solicit feedback. Um, not just sort of inform and tell and say, hey, this is what we're doing. Um, have it more be more of a a conversation, right? And um yeah, so. Come prepared to share and participate is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah. Are you are you going to record or or video the meeting on the sixth and the seventh by chance?
Um, I don't know. We hadn't thought about that. Um, we can we can think about what that might look like. It might be a little difficult. Um, with sort of the only a portion of it will be a presentation and and some of the question, there'll be sort of an interactive component, which might be hard to um to record, but.
Yeah, bulk and and Jacob, could you and and Mel, could you do me a favor? And if you could just record uh your presentation? And then the Q and A afterwards, so I could.
Yeah, we could probably do that.
Be out of town and I won't I won't be able to make either one of those or or the other ones. I'm not getting back in town until like the nineteenth. I'll be here for our executive meeting, but not at any of those.
Yeah, we should be able to make that happen. The 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 presentation, the Q and A that follows.
Yeah, that'd be great. Because that that's always very interesting. It's it's good stuff. What? Do we have anything else? On the agenda here?
That is it.
That was it. Does uh does anybody have anything, uh any old business or anything? They want to ask any questions, Todd, Paula, or or Chris? Anybody else on?
I feel like I have a lot of questions, but maybe I just missed some things.
Go ahead.
Curious about the the testing that you mentioned, like how is how how can these things be tested and and how are we actually going to make these changes move forward? I know I know Jacob's talked a little bit about how we can possibly change some of the um the planning and zoning to to help these things move forward, but um are there other things that we can do or that others can do to try and actually make this stuff happen?
Yeah, so.
It's a huge, that's just a little question. Is there a quick answer for that?
Kind of the, that's kind of the heart of it, right?
Well, I I didn't know where we were at in the process of getting to there.
Yeah, so I I would say the the scenarios that we've been painting where we're changing land uses are um generally based around, the changes we're making are generally based around uh sort of policy ideas, right? So um if we were to um have a trying to think of of how to to frame it, I guess. So it's if if we were to have a new policy in St. Louis County where um we are sort of reallocating our resources um that are dedicated to sort of transportation away from roads and more towards supporting um transit oriented development, multimodal infrastructure, other modes of of transportation be- beyond just the single occupancy vehicle. Um then sort of what that scenario allows us to do is sort of change the supporting land uses um that you would expect to see around uh sort of that type of development, right? And then um when we when we run that scenario that changed land use through the the sort of the geospatial testing model, we're able to to sort of churn out all these sort of projected um sort of metrics or measures. So we can estimate what the impact could be on population change, and this could be good or bad, right? Um, population change, you know, number of housing units, um.
The program will tell you all that.
Impact of of those land use changes, the um, you know, amount of emissions generated by that land use, all all those types of things are are being measured. And then essentially, we will take all of the best ideas from all of the sort of scenarios that we've created and create sort of one final um sort of future land use um map or 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 plan. Um, that will be sort of the the basis of the comp plan's recommendations, right? Um. And and ideally, and really, in in reality, the way it'll work is that because all of these issues are so interconnected, um, a lot of these sort of policy ideas will sort of come from multiple scenarios, right? They're all sort of center around these these nexus points where if you make this one type of change to the way we use our land, it's going to have an effect on the population, on the transportation network, on um you know, our our commercial activity, all these types of things, right? Um. I, you know, admittedly, it is a little sort of nebulous and hard to um work your work your head around, but I think once we have sort of the um Arc Urban model finalized and we can kind of show what um I think sort of visualize, have have this sort of data visualization tool to help us sort of explain what we're talking about, as well as looking at the the policy recommendations. I think you'll probably have um it might become a little bit easier to to sort of understand or or start to to wrap your head around. So basically, this is my plug to please show up to one of the open houses. Um, I think you'll find clarity there. I don't know if that answered any of your questions, Paula.
Look like Chris had a question.
Yeah, I saw Chris had his hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Great work so far. Uh, how I think you probably have discussed this before, but how are we getting feedback from by state? I I really want to make sure that that's incorporated.
Yeah.
So especially, you know, I think I've made my opinion pretty pretty clear so far, but I would really love some more by state activity, MetroLink bus routes up in North County near the near the zoo um expansion. So folks from West County can start utilizing that. Folks from South County can utilize that to to get there and back.
Yeah, so we've uh, I mean, we've had meetings with um Metro by state um around this. There's actually a um by states director of economic development is on our steering committee. Um, so we we've been sort of having conversations with them and will continue to have conversations with them um about sort of um their role in um sort of the future of St. Louis County and and uh potential changes in alignment with uh between sort of county transportation resources and and Metro by states resources. Um, and seeing where there are opportunities to um essentially expand the the service that they provide um in ways that are are sort of mutually beneficial. Um, so yeah, we'll we'll continue meeting with them and and working through um sort of what the sort of what the comp plan is is going to recommend um around transit usage and the and the transit network itself.
Can I answer your question, Chris?
It does. I've I've thought about the person from on the steering committee.
That's right.
Hey, anybody else have anything?
Good.
Good, Paula. Good job. Very, very good. Wish I was be here to be because I I have enjoyed going to the uh your presentation. Your presentations. As well as the open houses. It's all good informations. It's. It'd be good to see a lot of participation up there from. From the folks that live in the area especially. This is how many? How many open houses have you had now?
So these these will be our first three. And, you know, I don't know exactly what future engagement is going to look look like. We haven't quite figured that out yet, but. This is not the the only time we will be sort of sharing plan recommendations with with folks. So.
But the recommendations, but before that you had to open houses for folks to come in.
We did a lot of, we went to to folks a lot. We didn't host a lot of our own sort of engagement activities. We. We went to where the community was, right? So we were going to community events. We did have, we did have some. Sort of. Targeted focus group discussions. You know, we had the the survey that we sent out. So, yeah, we've run a lot of contact with with a lot of folks.
We were working on a slide to try to sort of summarize summarize all these, all these touch points. That didn't make it in tonight, but one of the other things we've been doing that I'm not sure we've talked about with the commission is going and meeting with a lot of our municipal partners as well. We sent a letter to every mayor and every, you know, planning director or economic development director, sort of that. Type of professional. So we've had a good handful of meetings with a few of the varying municipalities and and. And are intending to continue doing that as as people keep finding out about the plan.
And why is it that all municipalities haven't stepped up yet to provide some feedback? Is that just? You think there's some opposition or is it just a thousand things on on their radar? They just haven't?
I think, well, to try to ensure that they all do have the opportunity, we're trying to cast a really wide net. That's why we sent. You know, two letters to each locality, knowing that, you know. People may not open our mail or may open it and and still not choose to reach out. But we've gotten a lot of really positive feedback. A lot of people are just are. Like, the first thing they say is they're very excited that this work is occurring at all, and we are finding a lot of alignment. One thing I would say is that there's just so much varying sort of capacity. Throughout the munis too, that I think may may have something to do with it. Were you gonna add something, Jacob?
No, you're good.
Anybody else? Okay. Like, get a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed, ayes have it and we're adjourned and we'll see everybody, I guess, this coming next Monday.
Yes, at the executive meeting.
Six o'clock. On the WebEx?
On the WebEx, that's right.
Not in person.
No, not in person. Correct. Yep. Alright.
Thanks a lot. Good job.
Thanks, Dave.